Good evening. At this time, please silence yourself and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chamber and presented to the city clerk. Speakers physically present will be called upon at appropriate time and each person is allowed three minutes of speaking time. And I also want to thank Scott Ward from Supervisor Rouse's office being here. So if you have any county problems, see Scott. All right, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order July 8th at 6:00 PM. The invocation be given by the Mayor Pro Tem and the pledge allegiance be given by Dave. So please stand.
Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity to all come together this evening and we thank you not only for our residents and those who are engaging with government and being here to know exactly what's going on in our city, but to be here with us and clarity and knowing and holding us accountable. Lord, we thank you for each one of everyone, for our leaders, for our staff, for our friends. We thank you for your continuing to be upon and to guide this city, Lord. And we just pray that your presence here today as we begin to go through our business and be able to make the best decisions for our city, your name is great.
If you're ready to form, please, if you're out in your form, please place your right hand over your heart. Your name and the pledge of allegiance, ready to begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
All right, and I'd like to dedicate our meeting tonight for the family and the victims of the floods in Texas. So our hearts and prayers are with them and, you know, losing a child cannot be an easy thing. So please keep them in your prayers. So AB 2449 closer none. Roll call, Madam City Clerk, because we have roll call, please.
Councilmember Allen?
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sabino?
Here.
Mayor Hussey?
Here.
Councilmembers Matt Brown and Doug Wilson are absent. Mayor, you have a quorum.
So they did win the lottery?
I believe so.
Okay. Item A, reorder and additions or removal of items on the agenda. Do we have any?
No additions or deletions.
Okay. Was I mean, item B, public comment. This opportunity for members of the public to comment any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained by California laws, city council may not discuss or act on any items on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarifications. Mayor may also request a brief response for staff questionings arise during the public comment or may request a matter of agendas for future meetings. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody?
Yes, Kevin Potry.
Kevin?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about our wonderful dog park that we have in Grand Terrace. It's a treasure, but instead of being a 365-day treasure, it's a 317-day treasure. And this last Wednesday, when they closed it to be worked on, to be mowed, usually that's all that's done, nothing was done on that day. So that's another wasted day. I go to the park with a lot of people, you know, workers who have to get their dogs out. They need a place where they can let their dogs run and maybe they can't get out and walk, but they take it to the park. And if you lose a day on that, that's very difficult for your dog. You come home to your apartment. Many people live in apartments and it's stressful for the dog, stressful for the people. I'm just wondering, is there a way we can work something out, not to take Wednesday back, but maybe to give half of Wednesday back to us? If we could get the contractors, I don't know if it's a city contractor or there are independent contractors that do that work in the park one day a week. Maybe they can do it in the morning or before noon and then they leave it open for us. They leave it open for the rest of the day and then I'm a volunteer. I'll, I, I have a key. I come by there in the night, at night. If the individual that does it most times, Lyndon, will get that shut down, but we'd have the park in the evenings. And it's really the only place in town where we can let our dogs off the leash and they can run. So it's very important. And I just wonder if there's some way that we could work that out, that we could have half the day back, give us at least one time where we can take the dogs there. It may not sound to be all that important, but to a lot of the people that we talked to in the park, it is important. And on that idea, that's, that's as far as I have gone on that one. But the other one I'd just like to question, which also has an effect on the dogs, has an effect on people, it's the fireworks. And I don't think I understand what the rule is in this town about fireworks. And I've been here since 60, my family's been here since 60. I can remember we used to go to the Baptist church and we would watch the Orange Show fireworks. And that seemed to be enough, but every year it seems to get worse. And I just, I know we don't have the, the resources to have the police forces around looking, but I, I, I'm not familiar with this process. I know I probably get an answer from you later, but, or someone might phone me and let me know. But if there's something we can do, even if we have, even if they were to deputize, I mean, I don't know if that's silly, but to deputize, you know, 20 people to walk around the neighborhoods who had the ability to give people citations. I don't know how that works, but it would be difficult to find people who were shooting. I, I say that when it's not difficult. They're everywhere and they're bold. They, they go back out into the middle of the street and fire them. So if we could just look at a, a way to solve that problem before the, the next Fourth of July, which I'm all for celebrating US independence, but maybe we can find another way.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, first, comrade, what's the deal with Wednesdays? Do they, can we move, do it for early in the morning or?
Those are mowing days. And the other part of it is we give that, the, the dogs are really hard on the turf. So that gives the turf a day to rest too. If not, then we'd have to close it for longer periods or twice a year to reseed. So we're trying to balance the, the demand on it. So we can look at it and give it a shot, but I can't commit to it.
So mainly it was being closed because of reseeding and everything else when we had it closed?
It's being closed for mowing, maintenance in the park, and then to give that, the grass one day to rest because the dogs, the dogs are hard on the turf.
Okay.
And it's one of those places that we really, you know, we reseed that every year and sometimes even twice a year because they're so hard on it. If we don't give them that rest, then it'll just kill all the grass.
All right. Councilman Allen?
Yeah, I appreciate you asking the city manager about that because this seems to have been, this is recurring. So he's not, this gentleman is not the first one to have come to us about this. I thought about it. I'm just wondering, maybe there's, if there's an alternative to days, is Wednesday the only, only day? Is, is there a better day? I don't know. Maybe there needs to be a disc, some sort of, I appreciate that you're willing to, the city manager, to, you know, think about it, try to find a solution to this. Okay. But that, I don't want to, I just wanted to tell you why I wanted to say that. Thanks.
As far as fireworks, there's a bunch of disrespectful people around here that don't care. So we're, we're going to come up, try to come up with a solution, but it's, it's an ongoing thing. So if you want to stay longer, when I ask the lieutenant here for some background and all you possibly could do, you could listen in on that. So, all right. Madam City Clerk, do we have another public comment?
Robert Sanchez?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm kind of going to piggyback on Kevin as well. I've been fortunate to be out of town the last five years for Fourth of July. I was home this Friday and I would say it was a better fireworks show than Disneyland puts on. I was just amazed at the people that are lighting things up. I don't know, I don't have an answer of what to do, right? It's, it's isolated. It's here and there. It's pockets. I don't know. But it was Friday. It's been Saturday. It's been Sunday. It's been Monday. My dogs are terrified and, you know, I, I think about them. What's the answer? I don't know. I've been on both sides, you know, Safe and Sane fireworks. I've been with the Little League organization. I know it drives a lot of revenue for them, but God, a lot of us have been rezoned to high fire zones and our insurance has gone up and we're still allowing these to happen. Again, I'm just here to comment. I don't know what the answer is. It was just, I was amazed at the amount of illegal fireworks, fireworks that went on. And I was also entertained, I guess, but I mean, all it's going to take is, I know in the past we've had a house catch on fire during, during the fireworks. So it's all fun and games as you're watching it, but man, when that house catches on fire, that's, that's when the penalty is. So again, thank you. I mean, happy to be here. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not amazed at 3:30 in the morning when that moron lights them up. Give me a wake-up call. So here's my political answer. Who do we have else?
Bobby Forbes.
Bobby.
The flowers are a nice touch. Whoever put the flowers up. Thank you for listening.
That's from our new florist in town.
Awesome. She's been giving a lot to the community. I hope the community supports her as well.
Really nice.
So of course, I'm going to talk about the fireworks. You all know that already. So I get a call at 9:30 at night on Friday, Fourth of July, from someone on Vista Grande Way. She's a handicapped woman. She's in tears. Her next door neighbor's shooting the fireworks. I called the sheriff. The deputy did go. Couldn't catch them though. And she said, they're falling on my house. They're falling on my cars. I have a picture. There's 14 that are probably this long on top of her beamer, on her front porch, on the roof of her house, on her back porch, in her swimming pool. That's just the big ones. She was scared to death. She thought she was going to die. She couldn't have gotten out of her house if it caught fire. We know who it was because it was next door. So I thanked the deputy. He called me twice trying to catch them. I don't think Vista Grande is allowed to have them at all. And that's the major one that you probably saw. That was Friday night. Saturday night started at 1:45 in the morning and I started video and I think it was coming from the trailer park. Called the sheriff many times. The animal hospital had to call the sheriff twice because it was affecting the animals at the hospital. And there were yahoos out in the street of the hospital shooting off little ones, the safe and sane, which on Sunday night or Saturday night are illegal. That went on until after 3:00 in the morning. Most of you heard it because you could hear it all over town. And so on a good note, because of phone calls, someone on Loma Verde, Loma, Loma Hill Colton got caught this year. Big fine. I hope this will stop them. But they do it every year. The people at the condos behind Antonio's Pizza, I can see them from my house. You can probably see them from your house, mayor. It's horrible. The cops get there and they're all in their garages or they're hiding or they've got lookouts. And I've been fighting these fireworks since they started 30 years ago. And this year, I think you kind of bundled it up in some package because I don't remember it coming up. I might've missed that meeting, but I didn't get the opportunity to speak this year to say, please don't do it. Let the parents pay. I'll support the team, something, please. Let's stop the safe and sane so you can catch the illegals or at least some of them. If they get fined a couple of times a year, maybe it'll help. And I hope to hear your report that you caught somebody. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more public comment.
Okay, so we have a special presentation today, updated community choice energy study from the Inland Empire presented by Howard Choi, executive consultant for EES Consulting.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for your time. Howard Choi with EES Consulting, a national but mostly West Coast energy consulting firm primarily serving local governments in the energy space. I'm eight years retired from LA County as the GM of their Office of Sustainability. Want to give you an update on Community Choice Energy. You can go to the next slide, please. This has been legal since 2002. Really took hold around 2010, 2012 and about, about, oh, thank you. About half of the eligible customers who can be served under a CCE, Community Choice Energy Program, are being served now as opposed to being served by the local investor on utility. Very briefly, legislation allows local governments to purchase the electrons for their constituents instead of Southern California Edison. The electrons would still be delivered through the lines and wires, still run and operated by Southern California Edison. And the customers in your city would pay that part of the bill. Let's just say it's half the bill. The other half of the bill would be lines and wires for, for delivery of, of the electrons. Why, why would a local government want to do this? You can decide who you want to buy power from. If you want to buy more renewable power, you can buy more renewable power. If you want to just buy the absolute cheapest power on the market, you could buy that. If you wanted to buy power from a local or regional power generating source in, in your county or in your city, you could do that. It's, it's totally up to the governing board of, of the CCA. The rates, customer rates would be locally controlled as well. You would decide how you want to set the rates, whether to subsidize some customers or not, or whether to create inducement rates to generate business development or bring new businesses in. That's totally, again, a local decision and not one made out of Rosemead or San Francisco. I mentioned half the customers who can participate in the CCA are now doing so amongst many, many counties and cities. This, I want to spend a little bit more time on. The first column are just the names of the various CCAs representing most of the counties in the state, about half the cities. The coverage, the areas of coverage, you could see there's a combination of counties and cities. There's multiple counties and multiple cities. There's individual cities. Skip over that middle column for now. This is, all this information comes from financial reporting, publicly available financial reporting from the CCAs. We should, I, I, public information, I, I collect this from, from public documents. I show the year of initial operations. So you could see it ranges from 2012 up until most recent ones, 2022, 2023. And then the size is the far right column, the meters. You could roughly double that meter number and that would represent, just general rule of thumb, the population being served. I want to go back to this middle column now because this is the net financial position, also called net equity, revenues minus liabilities. This is basically the money in the bank that the CCAs have accumulated so far. So you can see, and, and it's not representative of size directly because the, the net financial position is a result of, do the CCAs want to provide more rate savings to their customers? Or do they want to put money in the bank for a rainy day or for special programs and special projects? You could see there's, we're talking very, very serious money here. If you add those all up, it's over $3 billion of revenue that is now being held by local governments instead of, and I'll just use Southern California Edison territory because that's where we are, instead of going to Southern California Edison. This is indicative of the success of CCAs as well. I, I think we could call it a proven, a proven program. Definitely works, lower rates, net revenues, local control on decision-making on the utility business. Lines and wires stays with Edison. That's, that's where most of the headaches are. So we, I'm going to go back. We were hired by the county of San Bernardino to do a feasibility study for the county and all eligible cities. And we use actual data that we procure from Edison for every rate payer in every city in the county to do this analysis. That report has been completed earlier this year. The county CAO staff are still going through that report. It has not been presented to the Board of Supervisors yet, but we have talked to each Board Supervisor. They're aware of this. We've been out talking to a lot of the cities as well. Separately and in parallel, the, the city of Fontana also hired us to do a feasibility study and they invited other cities to contact them and, and request to be included in that more, that more detailed, smaller feasibility study. Your city did contact Fontana and, and was included in a three-city study. Fontana, Rancho Cucamonga, and Grand Terrace did reach out or, or were part of the Fontana study. And this is our, our 10-year cumulative net revenue analysis. I can share this because this has been presented to the city council. I, I really can't share the entire county numbers because they have not, the CAO has not released that study yet to the, to the board. So I can tell you though, that the, what this, what this summary says is that it is viable. After 10 years, those three cities would have $207 million of positive net revenue in the bank. You can proportion, you know, the size of, of Fontana, Grand Terrace, and, and Rancho Cucamonga, and basically you, you can determine what, what we told the entire county net revenue would be. So, and this is the load, this is load information about how big your cities were. The other part of what, what CCAs do is they have access to funding from the state and from their revenues and from other sources to, to create local customer programs around, around energy. This, this has proven to be a, a thing that most CCAs didn't realize would be so popular when they got started. But in addition to the lower rates, the net revenues, having fund, access to funding to generate these really local programs has proven to be very beneficial as well. I, again, I was, I was kindly brought here just to give you an update. We know that the Board of Supervisors will shortly probably receive a summary report from the CAO on, on the results of that study. We know the city of Fontana is reaching out to the county right now. Fontana does want to go down this path and they're wanting to work with the county to do that. So hopefully very shortly, those communications will happen and then the, the county districts will, will hopefully want to reach out to their member cities and, and see what they think about this program. So I'll leave it at there and happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Council, any questions? Councilman Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks, Mr. Choi, for that, that update. You, I know, you mentioned these two studies, one that the county hired, you know, the, the company for, and one that the city of Fontana, which is the one that we participated in our city. So my question to you then is, the governing body or what sort of an entity would be best in, in the leadership role of, of a CCA? I mean, for, you know, like, there's a lot more to it than just what you were telling us. And so like getting, getting it started, but what, who, who is best suited to take the lead on something like this?
So if, if a city alone decided to operate a CCA by themselves, the, the, the governing board, the city, in this case, your city council would be the governing board and, and make the decisions. Granted, we know the energy industry is, is fairly complicated, requires a lot of specialized expertise and, you know, you, you would more than likely hire consultants to help you navigate through this. In the case where multiple cities and counties get together to do this, which is about 80% of the CCAs in the state, you form a joint powers authority. And then all the CCAs that are joint powers authority, each member agency has an elected who is, who is put on the board to make those decisions.
Okay. But, but like my, what I was thinking about it more of is, we don't have a CCA here. We're, you just did a study, but is, is, would Fontana be the, like, the lead agency? Or would it be, would it need to be a bigger entity or could a little entity like us?
King City in Monterey County, I think the population 10,000, they run a CCA by themselves. Apple Valley in your county runs a CCA by themselves. Rancho Mirage runs a CCA by themselves. Conversely, you've got LA County, Ventura County, and 35 other cities that, that run a CCA themselves. So the, the, the scale is, is pretty broad, but they're all, they're all operating that way now.
Would there be any effect to net metering those customers with solar and the net metering benefit that they get, what little it is now?
They can either stay, if they're a net meter solar customer with Edison, they can either stay with Edison or they can become a net energy metering customer of the CCA.
And there would, would there be much fluctuation in the rates?
You, you as a CCA could set that rate. Most CCAs set their net energy metering rate to be just slightly better than Southern California Edison.
So what about, what about individuals who are enrolled in the, things like the CARE and the Fair Plan?
So that they would, they would, they would, they could be a CCA customer, get the electrons supplied by the CCA, but they would stay on those subsidy, subsidy programs.
Okay. So the, and so they could choose also whether they even want to be a parter or not. And they can, they can become a member and, and then remove themselves from membership? Is that correct?
Yeah. So a CCA does not sign anybody up. Everybody is automatically in the CCA once it's created. And if a rate payer wants to opt out, they have multiple, they, they can opt out at any point in time.
Okay. Or in?
They can opt in at any point in time as well, but there are, they can only opt in if they've opted out, right?
Okay.
Then they can opt back in. Otherwise, they're automatically in.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And, and as far as to the local economy, the benefits to the CCA, are there any, like, can you, can you give me any?
So the, obviously, the, the positive net revenues are a benefit to the local economy. There are, there are studies that can be done that show benefits to the local economy if citizens are saving money from lower rates, citizens and businesses. There are studies that show that they take that savings and they spend it at local businesses and it has an impact there. So a, you know, I'll admit, it's a very highly academic study, but there are studies that can show the direct and indirect benefits of lower electricity rates to local customers. But the, but the net revenues are, and the ability to potentially generate or, or create local energy supply programs. I mean, this is San Bernardino County, right? There's a lot of local solar and storage, or regional solar and storage that's being developed here.
Is it, is, is the reason that CCAs are able to offer lower rates, does it have to do with them being in a nonprofit status?
It has to do because they have regulatory advantages over Southern California Edison. They do not, their power contracts do not need to be approved by the Public Utility Commission. So if I'm a power developer and I can sign a contract with the CCA in two board meetings as opposed to three years to get a contract approved with Edison at the PUC, I'm, I'm going to ink the deal at a better price. Also, let's face it, you are going to have less overhead, administrative overhead than a Southern California Edison. Nobody at a CCA makes a million dollars a year. I met many people in utilities who make a million dollars a year. And I have nothing against the utilities. That's just their business structure. This is a structure that just works better.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you so much for your presentation today. I worked for Edison during deregulation and so I saw the, the good and the bad of it.
Hopefully I didn't say anything bad.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, I, you know, I was there when, when the structure changed and having to navigate that situation. Just a couple of questions. With, just again to clarify, the residents would automatically be opted in. With, just again to clarify, the residents would automatically be opted in if we became, if we followed and became our own joint power authority? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then walk us through briefly the process with the CPUC, because as we know, anyone looking to change or modify what's in place with regard to current service, there usually is some resistance, so.
So a CCA would file some paperwork at the Public Utility Commission, and in two council sessions, legally, you would declare yourself a CCA. You're not in business until you start serving customers, so there's a number of steps to begin serving customers, but as soon as you file paperwork at the Public Utility Commission, you would, you would state a time period for which you want to start serving customers. You would then go out and start purchasing power supply contracts. You would work with Southern California Edison to schedule delivery of the power through their lines and wires, for which they get paid, of course. Edison does all the billing still. They use their same bill to bill the customers for the CCA power as well as their lines and wires. They collect from the customers. They send that, that part of the bill, which is for the power, they send it to the CCA. You then pay all your operating expenses, including the power supplier.
And so we would also then continue to bear the burden of share of costs with regard to any maintenance upkeep, because we're utilizing their lines in a different capacity?
Yes. So every customer continues to pay the other half of the bill, which is lines and wires, which is, you know, let's face it, it's becoming more and more important, and rightly so. That has become Edison's and the other IOU's primary focus, is to make sure that the grid system is reliable and resilient. And that's why you won't see Edison or the other IOUs really come out against CCA, because it doesn't, you know, who buys the electrons isn't really important to them. They don't make a rate of return on it. Their primary focus, as the state electrifies and gets hotter and grows, their primary purpose is taking care of the lines and wires, which is, which is what they're absolutely well-suited to do, and they get paid for it by everybody.
And this wouldn't absolve us from power safety shut-offs, correct?
Right. Every customer, whether you're CCA or Edison, you're still going to be subject to public safety power shut-offs.
Okay. And my last question. What is the priority of Edison for other government entities who've chosen to go this path, where someone like Grand Terrace, we had about 90% of our community shut down, upwards of to 100% during a power safety shut-off? Are they no longer a priority with regard to updating or hardening of the wires in their community?
Their priority for how they schedule grid work, for what you're talking about, is not supposed to change if someone becomes a CCA. I mean, that's stated in the regulations. So, no. You should not be at a disadvantage because you're a CCA. I will say, though, that as, as they look at their grid and try to make it more reliable, say, in your community, you as a CCA can be a partner with them to help identify where either customer behavior or local generation sources strategically placed in the grid can make your system a bit more reliable. So we're seeing that a lot, that cities who are CCAs are working now with the utilities who are lines and wires operators to get to those, address those issues or those areas on the grid that are causing shut-offs or unreliable service. So it's a good, it's a good partnership, because we've all seen Edison try to encourage certain types of behavior. And listen, I'm a local government person, and I've always believed that local governments are, know their communities better than Edison does.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Choi. Do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you for your presentation. Item D, consent counter, the following consent counter items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, be acted upon, city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of the consent counter for discussion. Do we have any public comment on the consent counter?
No, sir.
Okay. And I got to reclusive myself for item D three, may check register, check number 82521 for 35985 for reimbursement for may health insurance, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may start to interrupt. For that line item, I'm going to recommend that we bring that back to the next meeting. There's a government code section that provides that for orders of payment of money, resolutions and ordinances, we need a majority of the legislative body, which means three votes for an item. So because that's an order for payment of money, I would bring that back where we have a full.
Bring.
That one line item that you're recusing yourself back, because if it goes forward tonight, I anticipate it'll get approved two to one.
All right. Anything else? I'm glad you caught that. That's what we pay you for, huh?
That's what you pay me for. Yes, we'll just remove that one line item, and we'll bring that back on the next agenda.
So we're removing item three, then? Is that what you're saying?
No, just the line item that you're recusing yourself. We'll bring that one item back.
Okay. Do we have a motion or a second?
I'll move.
And a second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Anything else? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Did you put armor all on my seat? Because every time I move, it's like, makes noise.
Wasn't me.
All right. Think you messed with me. I don't know about you, Daisy. Debbie told me. All right. Item E, public hearing, levy assessment for delinquent refuge and sewer accounts. Oh, speaking of sewer account, I want to thank you, Mike, for giving me a heart attack at your company this week, so I got my sewer bill almost passed. I was getting ready to open up an outhouse in my backyard.
We didn't correct.
Okay. Ms. Tillman, go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, city council. Shanae Tillman, senior management analyst, Public Works. This public hearing is to discuss the placement of liens on properties with delinquent refuse and sewer accounts. The staff report before you supports the following goal: ensure fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery for sewer, trash, sewer and trash services previously rendered. Residential refuse and sewer fees are assessed through the city's partnership with BRTAC, while commercial sewer fees are assessed through the city of Colton, and assessments are sent to the San Bernardino County Tax Assessor's Office. As of today, there are 168 delinquent residential refuse sewer, refuse and sewer accounts, an increase from the 127 noted in the staff report, totaling over 81,000. In addition, there are 16 delinquent commercial sewer accounts, reflecting a reduction of three accounts and a total balance of over 18,000. All delinquent accounts must be cleared by August 2nd, and a final list will be submitted to the county's tax assessor's office by August 10th. Staff recommends the following: adoption of delinquent residential and commercial refuse, and sewer fees to be placed on the county's tax roll; adoption of the resolution accepting the preliminary delinquency report and authorizing fees to be collected as property tax assessments; approval of the agreement with the county auditor controller for collection of these fees on behalf of the city; and approval of the same agreement for the collection on behalf of our lighting and landscape district. And I am available for any questions.
Council, any questions? Does the council pay their trash bill?
Yes.
Everybody good? All right. Do I have any public comment?
No, sir.
Oh, you have Bobby Forbes raising her hand back there.
I would just like to ask, hasn't this always been in place, that it could go on the tax roll?
Yes, but every year we have to go through this procedure so that any delinquent accounts are placed on tax.
That's what I thought this was, but everybody in town got really excited, so thank you.
Yeah, it's, we do this every year for, I bet you buy the law there, and then the money goes, so the tax, it goes on their tax lien?
That's correct.
So when they get their property taxed, they get a little extra chunk. So they get charged interest for that?
There are some taxes that BRTAC and the city of Colton do place for delinquent accounts.
So no other public comment, no other questions? We'll close public hearing. Council, do you have anything that you want to add to this? No? City attorney, you have anything?
No, I would just recommend that whoever makes the motion just make the, motion to adopt the items as set forth in the staff report.
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the items as set forth in the staff report.
Thank you.
Second.
And for the record, that includes adoption of the resolution as stated by Ms. Tillman, and approval of an agreement between the county auditor controller and the city, and approval of an agreement between the county of San Bernardino auditor controller and the city, and the district for the collection of special taxes. So just a brief summary. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Nothing else? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Staffing vacancies pursuant to Assembly Bill 2561. Michelle?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protan, council members. Michelle Fuentes, senior management analyst, HR, risk management. I'm presenting this item today in compliance with Assembly Bill 2561, which took effect this year. AB 2561 requires that cities with union-represented employees hold an annual public hearing to discuss staffing levels, hiring and retention practices, and any challenges the city faces in recruitment. The city of Grand Terrace currently has 12 non-exempt union-represented positions, of which we presently have one vacant position. This brings our current vacancy rate to approximately 8.3%, which is below the 20% threshold that would trigger a more extensive report. The city also has 12 exempt non-union positions, which are all filled. To attract and retain qualified employees, the city uses several strategies. We post job openings on both the city's website and governmentjobs.com, which is widely used for government recruitment. In 2024, we completed a salary survey comparing our pay ranges with those of similar-sized cities in the region. Based on that data, the city adjusted certain salary ranges where financially feasible to remain competitive. But beyond recruiting, we also focus on employee retention. We aim to give staff autonomy in their work and encourage them to share ideas and feedback. We truly value everyone's contribution. Our small, close-knit team reflects the feel of, the feel of our community here. People know each other and support one another. When possible, we offer flexible schedules to help with work-life balance. We also make an effort to recognize employees both informally through day-to-day appreciation and more formally during performance reviews. We also offer training opportunities to help staff grow and exceed in their roles, and we're committed to keeping our workplace safe, respectful, and inclusive. That said, we still face some challenges. Many are common in smaller cities. Our budget is tied closely to our population, which limits how much we can grow our team or adjust salaries. We also don't have the same name recognition as larger nearby cities like Riverside or San Bernardino, which can make recruitment a little tougher. I can't tell you how many times I've been asked, where is Grand Terrace? And with smaller organizational structures, there are fewer chances for internal movement. But we'll continue to look at our staffing needs and keep working to improve our hiring and retention efforts within the resources we do have. Staff recommends that council receive and file this information. And this concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Staff, have any questions? No? Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
City attorney, you have anything?
Nope. The appropriate motion would be to receive and file.
Okay. So, yeah, go ahead.
In this game of ping-pong Jeff and I are playing, I will move to receive and file.
Okay. You have a motion.
I'll second it.
So this receive and file, we need a vote on it?
Yes. For the record, I would recommend the.
You know, I'm going to need a pain pill moving my neck back and forth. All right. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who motioned. And second.
There's only two.
And I'm getting lost.
It's getting harder and harder, Daisy.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Just pick anybody. I'm not moving my neck anymore. All right. Unfinished business, none. New business: community benefit funds for the Grand Terrace Women's Club in the amount of $2,000. Speaking of, I want to thank the Women's Club for our plaque. It only cost us $2,000. Thank you for the city. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protan, council. Christine Clayton, finance director. The city received a community benefit fund application in the amount of $2,000 for the Women's Club, and here to speak on their behalf is Judy Duffield.
Good evening, Mayor, city council and guests. I'm Judy Duffield, I'm the first vice president for the Grand Terrace Women's Club. As you know, we've been here since 1908, so for 117 years, we have done a lot for the city of Grand Terrace. I would like to thank you for considering us for the grant for Christmas children. We fundraise all year long to get the funds needed for Christmas, to help as many families as we can. We do it through bingo, light up Grand Terrace, and our opportunity drawings. It started 40 years ago with three members who had had the idea to go shopping and purchase Christmas dinner and buy toys for childrens for a few families they knew needed help in Grand Terrace. Our president, Debbie Earl, was one of those three. Last year, we were able to give most we have ever given due to the grant. $500 to Stater gift cards, $300 for Walmart so they could buy purchases for the children's clothing. Since 2010, Paragon Tattoo has stepped up and said how we can help, and they have been donating toys to us, so they can, been with us ever since. Due to their generosity, due to your generosity grant, we made more than six families happy, and one had a wonderful Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this?
Ms. Duffield?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. No public comment.
Did you fill out a public comment form?
No, but I'll get another one if you want.
Okay. You owe me one.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I've been in the Women's Club since 1988, and I remember when they started doing this for Christmas, we collected cans and food donations from the elementary schools, and they got the names from the elementary schools. And these women worked so hard, thank you, Johan. They worked so hard, and we collected food. I remember going in Carolyn's garage and other garages. We busted our butts doing this, and then we would take the food to the people's homes. One time, the one that got me the most was Larry was with us from the Lions Club, and we went to the mobile home park over in Lakkadina, and we go in there, and this woman has an infant on her hip, one in the little rocker, little kids running around. She was a foster mom. She had the stove burning for heat. I never was poor, per se. I never, I didn't understand what she was doing. I opened my mouth and said, do you know that this is burning? I had no clue. I was so stupid. But she didn't have heat. She didn't, and she, here she had all these foster kids, and what the Women's Club was giving her, and the Lions Club gave $100 or $200 at that time, it was amazing. This woman was in tears. These children were not going to probably get anything. That was a long time ago, and these women have continued to do this, and it has come a long way. We don't collect cans anymore. We don't do the storing the toys and all this kind of stuff. The tattoo parlor's been awesome. But they work really hard, and the group really deserves this grant, and please, and thank you for giving it.
Thank you, Bobby.
Can I speak for a second? I'm not from Grand Terrace. I live in San Bernardino, but I picked Grand Terrace to come to their Women's Club. My first Christmas there, I couldn't believe it. We met the families in a. We met the families in a parking lot. Every child in that family that we picked got at least five new toys, had their own bag. We gave the families their cards and things. There was one lady came on a bus, and she had gotten so much stuff, she was so upset because she couldn't, they wouldn't let her take it all on the bus. We gave, we gave her a ride home so she could take her children's Christmas home to them. These people really look forward to us helping them, and we help them in any way we can, and not just at Christmas.
Well, we need you to move to Grand Terrace, so there's a real estate lady right there. Sell your house. No, I completely understand. I was one of those kids that didn't have Christmas and had to stand in line for toys, so I completely understand. So, thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
The council have any comments? Councilman Allen?
I'd like to, are we ready to make a motion?
If you want to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Community Benefit Fund Grant Application from the Grand Terrace Women's Club in the amount of $2,000 to support Christmas for children. Thank you, Women's Club.
Second.
A motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes.
All right. Okay, I expect something for Christmas now. Okay, like a new neck or something, you know, because vertebrae are killing me. Thank you, ladies, for everything you do and continue to do. I know this is one of your projects, but I know you do plenty of others. Community Benefit Fund Grant Award to Troop 40 BSA in an amount of $2,000.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, Christine Clayton, Finance Director. The city received a community benefit application from Troop 40 BSA in the amount of $2,000, and David Cransdale is here to talk about the troop.
Good evening, Mayor Hussey, and members of the City Council and members of the community. I'm also joined by Harrison Lux, one of my Assistant Scout Masters for Troop 40. This week, currently as we speak, our Boy Scouts for Grand Terrace are up in Angeles Oaks enjoying summer camp at Camp Takowitz. It's a 100-year-old camp. It actually celebrated its 100th year of offering Boy Scouts summer camps this year. Every year, we try and get our Boy Scouts to go to this week-long camp somewhere in our local mountains, and this year is an exciting kind of addition to that. We have three new scouts that have never been to a summer camp before that are joining our troop's camp this year. So, a lot of new experiences for those boys in having some independence from their parents for a week, being responsible for themselves, making it to their classes on time, eating all of their dinner, taking showers at the end of the night, getting all of those things taken care of that as young adults we expect from our boys. This year, much like last year, I know I went on and on about all of the different awards and the activities that they're doing. Just to give you kind of a sample, they're participating in swimming. They just went on a five-mile hike to Jinx Lake, which those of you who are familiar with the San Bernardino National Forest, it's a pretty decent hike from Angeles Oaks to Jinx Lake. They didn't complain too much. The adults complained more than the boys did. They're also in, actually, right now, they're actually just finishing dinner right now, but about an hour ago, they were doing climbing and rappelling. They were doing rifle shooting, shotgun shooting, archery. There's also horsemanship this year. So, in addition to being able to learn how to ride a horse, they're learning how to care for horses and care for livestock. They're also doing leadership training. We have several of the boys that are taking the role as the camp leader, where they're responsible for getting each other and cheering each other on to get places, so that it's not the adults running it, it is the boys keeping each other accountable. Just as an example, three of our leaders in our troop, actually, I think it's four of our leaders, Harrison, myself, Jeff Fitzsimmons, who is at camp right now with the boys, and we have one other Assistant Scout Minister, we're all products of this program. We're all Eagle Scouts. We've all been to summer camps throughout the years in our earlier days. But as a result of these summer camps and the leadership we experienced, we've always said that we learned more from these experiences than we did in high school, excuse me, high school and college. And we're all, I have run a business for 22 years. Harrison is an entrepreneur. We have another person who's a geologist with the state. I mean, we, we take these skills and these experiences to heart and really means a lot to us. So, giving these boys the opportunity to go to summer camp this year and in years past, it's really setting them up for the future of Grand Terrace and the future of our community, because these are the boys that will make a difference. They may be City Council members one day, they may be business owners one day, and this is that building block that they needed. So, I'll open it up to question. Oh, Harrison brought a kind of a pictorial of what the activities that they're doing currently. This was like literally this morning, some of these pictures came in that you guys can take a look at and see how the boys are having fun. And I'll open it up to questions.
So, are you sure you want to put the boys to be a council member? Because that's. That's child abuse.
There are some of them that I think they would love it, yes.
Councilman Allen?
Thank you, gentlemen, for your report. Thank you for what you and your colleagues do for our youth, for the boys. And I tell you what, I got five horses out at a little ranch over here. When you get them back, let me know. I got some stalls that need some stuff cleaned out of them, okay?
Yes, definitely.
Then you'll have to make it $4,000 grant fund. Mayor Protem, you have anything you want to say?
I just want to thank you for all that you're doing to invest in our youth and being able to teach them just those fundamentals that, you know, that they don't get from their school education programs and just being able to get back out and be contributing members of society. So, thank you.
So, on this $2,000, what would this accomplish for your troops, your troop?
So, this goes to assist our families that may have financial struggles this year to help them pay for the summer camp tuition. Every year, it seems like the summer camp tuition goes up. I think the first year, we probably went to summer camp, it was like $150. Now, it's $600, $700 just to be able to get the one boy to go. So, the fundraising that we do, and then with the community grant that you guys have available, it really helps our parents try to make it to where no kid is left behind. If a boy wants to go to summer camp, the money is not a problem. We will figure out a way to get them to go.
So, all the boys got to make it this year?
Every boy that was eligible to go to summer camp and that wanted to go to summer camp is there right now.
So, eligibility, what's that?
They, well, they have to not be in summer school. We had a few scouts that are taking summer school this year, so they were not able to make it. And then, just, they have to be good scout, they have to be no disciplinary problems, things like that, which none of our boys have any issues like that. But, yeah, anybody that wants to go to summer camp that is in the program should be able to go.
All right, well, thank you for everything you're doing. Do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second?
I'll move to approve the Community Benefit Fund Grant Application in the amount of $2,000 for Troop 40 BSA for their summer tuition.
And I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. Make sure you see Councilman Allen so you can earn some other money picking up whatever.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, I have a request for a five-minute recess, so we'll take five minutes. We'll be back here at 7:04. Five-minute recess. Hello. All right, we'll go ahead and reconvene at 7:06. And we are item number nine. Appointing voting delegates to Cal City 2025 Annual Conference and Expo. Daisy, Daisy, didn't we already appoint somebody? And this is just a formality?
Quickly, need to vote on the item.
Well, I can hear you now.
Yeah. It was odd. So, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. Daisy Alcacer, City Clerk. Staff report before you is the appointment of a delegate and the alternate for the upcoming Cal City's Annual Conference, taking place in October in the City of Long Beach. Per Cal City's bylaws, both the delegate and the alternate must be designated by a resolution, which also must be done by City Council vote. The voting delegate will participate in the business meeting held on October 10th, which is a Friday, to consider general and petition resolutions that are forwarded by the Resolutions Committee. So, at this time, staff recommends that the City Council designate one delegate and one alternate from the City Council to represent the City of Grand Terrace.
So, we have any public comment before we designate?
No, sir.
So, who, didn't we designate one two years ago or a year ago?
In January 14th, we had a City Council meeting, and Councilmember Matt Brown was appointed the delegate, and Mayor Protem Sabino is the alternate. Yeah, and if you wish to keep that, we could just go ahead and take.
Yeah, I mean, let's just keep that as it is.
Perfect.
Council, have any questions or suggestions? Jeff, you have anything?
But we need to vote on it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council, the City Grand Terrace, California, appointing Matt Brown and Mayor Protem, Michelle Sabino, to the 2025 Cal City's Annual Conference and Expo as official representatives of the City of Grand Terrace.
I'll second. Now, you know you got to stay there the rest of the time while we're driving home, right? Oh, okay, yeah, that was a surprise. That's what we don't do anymore. First, I like your look on your face, Michelle, like what? Please vote.
Motion passes, thank you.
All right. Item 10, Future Agenda Item Review for Existing Marijuana Policy and Ordinance, presented by City Manager.
All right. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilmember. We had a request, actually, a while back, to go over and just update on marijuana ordinances and policies. So, this is basically the staff has reviewed what's happened in the last two years, as far as code enforcement activities, public feedback, and any other considerations as far as state law or any changes going on. We found that what we have currently now is consistent with our community values. We don't have any, any policies that are, you know, inconsistent with what the community's really looking for. We have a very low rate of cannabis-related complaints, and we have effective toll enforcement tools in place to deal with any complaints. There is no mandate or request for local commercial activity, and there are no immediate economic benefits either identified or going at risk at this point, at this point. So, with that, stack rough men said no action be taken, and that you receive and file, and we go forward from here.
All right, council, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Council, have any questions? Okay, so on this Conrad, on our thing that was voted back in, what, May 2022, the three councilors won the workshop, this is pretty much squashed?
This is it.
All right.
We don't see a reason, yep.
Okay, so, we'll never have this on, and nobody can bring it back now, unless they re-vote and do all this other thing again, right?
Unless somebody wants to put it on a future agenda item at some other point.
All right, great.
Or they get high and decide they want to do it.
Do you have a motion and a second?
On motion?
Second.
Have a motion, second, please vote.
And again, for the record, the motion is to receive and file.
And the receive and file.
Motion passes.
Adrian, you got to get a little faster. Duly note that on your paycheck. Take away a quarter. All right, item 11, Eliminating Existing City Positions.
I can't speak without my slides, so we have to. All right, so this is authorizing the City Manager to eliminate existing positions. City Manager is responsible for the operation, administrative operation of the city, is entrusted to day-to-day management and general day-to-day operations. That includes human resources and managing our personnel policies. And then, again, responsible for doing that in a strategic and timely manner. So, what we're, what we're asking for is that the council currently has the authority to create and eliminate existing positions, to work forward in a timely manner, and to be able to adjust our workforce as economic conditions change and demands change. We're requesting that the City Council delegate the City Manager to be allowed to eliminate positions and only eliminate positions, not create positions going forward. As part of the oversight for that, the City Manager shall notify the council in writing 15 days after the elimination of any position. Therefore, the council is aware of what's going on, and that does not allow for the creation of any new positions. That again is the right of the council, and that there's no additional expenditures or unbudgeted expenditures associated with this, which of course would have to go to the council. And with that, staff recommends adoption of the resolution.
Okay, is there any public comment?
No, sir.
So, the attorney, you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Council, have any questions? No. A motion and a second?
I'll move to adopt the resolution for authorizing the City Manager to eliminate existing positions and approving amendments to the city.
And I'll second.
A motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes.
All right. Okay, item 12, First Read and Introduction, the title only additional to mobile food truck ordinance to the City of Grand Terrace Municipal Code. Conrad, I'm glad you're getting paid some money to be up there talking.
But we're banging out some of those agenda requests, so. Okay, so we're looking to add an ordinance that regulates operation of mobile food trucks. So, currently, you know, mobile food trucks tend to be popular throughout Southern California. It's definitely a regional activity, and people enjoy going to them, using them. However, there is, there is an issue with food trucks, both in the right-of-way and on private lots, so that we do have the ability to regulate that, and the vehicle code does grant us that, that right to provide that regulation. And at this point, we do not have a comprehensive framework to handle that. We have the ability to regulate brick-and-mortar restaurants, we have the ability to regulate pushcart vendors and street peddlers, but these, these guys kind of fall in the middle, so we're creating a framework to regulate food trucks in the community. So, the goal is, is that we will essentially treat food trucks with the same requirements as a, as a brick-and-mortar building would have, so the licensing, what they have to do. What we don't want to do is give an advantage to food trucks and undersell our brick-and-mortar buildings. We also don't want to put impediments in the way that are unnecessary for the food trucks, and we'll go over some of those. What we do, though, is we will allow food trucks at private events, at private, on private property that are not open to the public. So, if you want to have a food truck that caters your wedding or bar mitzvah, as long as it's your crowd and you're on, you're on your property, that's outside of our purview. And then, we also want to constrain the activities on to going on on commercial property. We don't want food trucks in residential zones and other places, so essentially, we're constraining the operation to places where restaurants would normally, would normally operate. What we're doing is we're limiting the, the specific zones to the commercial zone, so you're just essentially the same place a restaurant gets to operate. We're putting. We're putting it in, eliminating in places that may be a danger as far as schools, parks, libraries, other sensitive places, where we really don't want that activity, and we're kind of, we're establishing hours of operation that are fairly reasonable, so we don't have food trucks out there at, you know, midnight or, you know, ten o'clock at night, causing problems in the community. Other things we're looking at is that there's, we're not impeding traffic flow for the ones that are on the, in the right-of-way, that it's, there's clearance around, there's visibility. So there are some setbacks from driveways, setbacks from intersections, setbacks from, um, signs, that there has to be a, a certain room, so you're not causing a, a problem with the truck. We're not allowed to obstruct driveways or drive aisles or routes. Um, there's some limitations on overhangs, so that you're not into the sidewalk area, and again, that we're not in, causing any problems as far as any access. And then there's some fairly stringent requirements on trashcans, picking up your trash, not dumping waste, not restocking. And then for, um, you know, part of it is, is that they're, if there's, if they're set up for more than an hour at someplace, they have to have access to restrooms, which is pretty typical for a brick-and-mortar operation as well, um, that they have to have waste receptacles. We're not allowing them to sell alcohol, have amplified sound, do overnight parking, restocking in the streets. So we're trying to be fairly constrained on what they are, are not allowed to do. Come in, sell their product, leave. And then they're also not able to set up furniture tables, chairs, or anything that would block the sidewalk or cause any, any constraints. The idea is to be able to come in, do your business, transact, and then go and, and, you know, we, we don't wanna create picnic areas, um, in, in the streets and the surrounding area. The other piece of this is that, um, you know, what happens on private property is between the property owner and the food truck operator. So should somebody set up in a shopping center in town, they would need to rent that space from the shopping center. They would need to then make, um, accommodations for restrooms, accommodations for parking, the same as any brick-and-mortar building would have to do. So we're, we're holding these, these to pretty much the same standards. And then again, public, the public health certificate, business licenses, pay the taxes. There is a temporary use permit process, um, encoded in this, so there is a planning requirement. As part of this planning requirement, um, the, the food truck operators will have to, um, let me get my, get my notes here. You know, provide us a vicinity map on where they choose to, where they're planning on operating, a business description, give us their health permits, also provide us some of the things that are, that, you know, most people don't understand is you can't park a food truck at a house overnight, so they have to be held at some commissary location, where that place is, where they're, where they're dumping their grease and wastewater, all these, these back-of-house things, that if it was a building, we would make sure they had a grease interceptor, would make sure they had trash service, make sure, we're making sure that they're doing these things off-site, whether it's in the city or someplace as well, that they're not just dumping someplace. So a temporary use permit controls a great, a great part of that. And then, like I said, insurance restrooms, if they're necessary, waste disposal, all these things that are, that are required for a restaurant, we're treating this as a restaurant on wheels. And with that, thank you, and staff does recommend approval of this. Do you have any questions?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Um, can we go back to slide four? Sorry.
Which one? One more?
One more. There we go, there's four. Prohibits operation near schools, parks, libraries. So when the schools have their annual autumn festivals, they're no longer allowed to have food trucks on their private property?
It's private property for an event for, they're not open to the public, they can do whatever they like.
Okay. Uh, this is just, they can't post up outside?
They can't post up on the, the street outside, this, they can't be in the school parking lot for the school event and have everybody in town and get a taco, come and get a taco. It's for, it's on their site for their people, and that, that then is the business transaction between the property owner and the food truck vendor.
Okay, and then, they can be on private property, commercial only, but not residential?
That is correct.
Okay.
They can do commercial operations, so sell to the general public on commercial zone property. They can be on private property if it's for a private event.
Okay.
Just, just like, you know, a, a restaurant is. You can't build a restaurant in your neighborhood, but you can have a barbecue for your friends.
So it's equivalent to having a cater?
Yes.
Okay. Those were all my questions. I just wanna make sure I clarified for the community in the room, that they understood what I understood. Thank you.
So Conrad, so, um, not in parks, we have our special event in parks, they can't be there now?
The city is exempt from that. Since it's our rule, we get to make our rules.
So what about, uh, youth leagues, same thing?
Same thing. And unfortunately, there are, there are a couple of operators that are really involved with the youth leagues, and I, I really support where they're at and what they're doing, but we can't get to a point where we allow one guy and don't allow another guy, and it just becomes really problematic to say, you know, Joe, Joe can operate his truck, but Fred can't.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, what was that?
If the neighboring school allows the soccer league to put a food truck on their property the day of their games, is that?
If, if they're selling to the general public, they are not allowed to. If it's on the school, for a school activity, they are.
Okay.
The, the, the line is, the line really isn't necessarily the location, it's the selling to the general public. And so selling to the general public has to happen in commercial zone, just like everybody else that sells to the general public.
So commercial zone, if we have a gas station, that's zone something else besides that's not a food zone, right?
It's in the commercial zone, so it's, it may not be operating as a restaurant, but where the gas station to get torn down, a restaurant built there would be zoned for that use.
So our gas station, our liquor stores, or anything else can have a food truck then? They get permission and get a permit and?
They, they would need to, um, first get permission from the property owner, um, secondly, show to us that they're not impacting the parking, so that every place has to have a certain amount of parking for that site. So by putting the food truck, you've taken one parking spot. By bringing in people, you've taken additional parking spots. So there still has to be sufficient parking on the site for both, for both types of business. So for the smaller sites, that's probably, it's pretty problematic. So we're, we really have, if you're gonna put it on private property or a commercial site, it would probably be, you know, State or Brothers, the grocery outlet and, probably even, Woody's is too small.
So you have a, a taco truck opening on the State or Brothers parking lot, but we got Miguel's Jr., and now we just took away revenue from Miguel's Jr., but State or Brothers says, okay, I mean, shouldn't we have permission from all the businesses on that property?
Whoever, whoever the landlord is. So, and the argument would be is that, um, Miguel's Jr. is there, and they're gonna open, you know, Jose, Jose's Taco Stand on the same property. That's something for the landlord and their tenants to work out. We, we are not, but they can't open there without the landlord's permission, so they, they must have landlord permission to operate.
So if the landlord gives permission, and you're saying require that they have restrooms, those tenants that are renting the, the brick-and-mortar don't have to let those people in the restroom, so that landlord's.
If they're there for more than an hour, they must make arrangements for a restroom.
All right, any other questions? Public comments?
Bobby Forbes?
So I don't like the food trucks. I don't like the one in High Grove, which is not Grand Terrace. They cause traffic jams, they're out there late at night, the lights are shining into people's houses. I know that I've called you to shut them down in the grocery outlet park lot without Anita's approval. That's happened a couple of times. I, I do like the idea of a business doing as a promotion. Um, I think the fees have gotten pretty high. When Freddie tried to do that last time at Smart and, Smart and Final, um, there was an issue with his business doing one, but I appreciate that you're making this so tight, 'cause I don't want him in town, myself. Um, I think it's unfair to the businesses that are here, and if you get sick, you're sick, then what? You know, nobody, you can't call the county to come out and check out that chili that you ate that got you sick. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. So, uh, one other question. They come in here illegally and open up business, like you already told you, that one coffee, it looked like, you know, regular trailer there until you look on the other side and they had a coffee shop going. Besides code, go in there and tell them they can't be here, what's the fine?
Um, we're getting to that in a moment. Right now, it's miniscule, but, um, if, we'll, we'll look at the next item.
All right.
And the, but what this does allow, though, it is, you know, another, another citation for operating outside this code, and then operating without a business license, operating without the permit, and operating without the T U P, which all are compounding multiple fines.
So you're leaving us with a cliffhanger?
I'm leaving you with a cliffhanger. Right, right now, it's, the, the maximum fine is one hundred dollars.
All righty. So no other public comments, Daisy, and no other comments, do I? Uh, city attorney?
Not at this time.
So before we vote, direct the city attorney to read the ordinance.
I will do that.
Okay, 'cause I got the notes right here that you put on.
The title of the ordinance for introduction is as follows, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, adding chapter twelve point six zero, six zero, mobile food trucks to title twelve Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to regulate the operation of mobile food trucks within the city of Grand Terrace.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes.
Okay, item thirteen, first reading introduction, the title only ordinance allowing establishment and schedules of fines and by resolution. So Conrad?
Okay, so here's where we resolve that cliffhanger. So, um, we, we're looking at a very large lift here in multiple sections of the ordinance, all relating to violations and fines of the code. So why, first, why do we have fines? First, to, you know, provide a, a consistent system of penalties for violation, so that it's the same thing over and over. Um, we, we wanna remove any ambiguity, so that if Joe gets a fine, Fred gets the same fine for doing the same thing, that there isn't a, a differential between there. We wanna be very transparent, so that you know before you do something what the consequences are, and we wanna make sure that we've included the full spectrum of every, of all our possible repercussions, citations, infractions, misdemeanors, and, and the, the sections of the codes. We've covered the full spectrum. So currently, and not through any nefarious thing or anything else, our code is forty-five years old or older, and over time, we've had amendments made, things are brought in, codes are brought in, codes are updated, and we've had this piecemeal changing of the code, and just by nature of that, there's a lack of consist, a consistency, especially as far as the way, um, violations are classified and what the fines are. So for some, if, if the standard fine was fifty dollars thirty years ago, and we changed something, but we didn't go back to that piece, the fine is still fifty dollars instead of something else today. So, um, what we're trying to do is not have these scattered all over the code, but centralize it, so that as times change, we can move forward. We have some that identify in different places of the code, the same or similar violations, some as infractions, some as misdemeanors, um, s- some, they don't, they just say they're unlawful, and there's no penalty at all. Um, just, it's unlawful. I don't know if that means that you, you pay a dollar fine, or it's a death penalty, because there's no distinction between what, what the penalty is for the act. And then so, we, we wanna do is bring a really consistent, transparent, um, transparent view to, to what we're doing. So we want to, um, remove the cross, you know, cross, cross references, any room for, interpretation, we wanna, you know, this is, this is causing confusion for the staff, to make sure, 'cause we wanna be consistent, and for the public, because you, you gotta find for one thing one way a year, and then the next year, it's something different. So we wanna make this very, very clear. We also wanna make sure that, um, you know, there's a schedule, that you know what, you know what your consequences are before you act, and finally, that there's a escalating, um, set of fines for repeat offenders, for the people that just don't care or are willing to do this, so that there's some, some increase in escalation for doing it over and over again. So, um, we have three different types of violations as in, in this, in what we're proposing. First is in a frac, an infraction. Um, it's basically the, the lesser of the evils. Um, you didn't get your dog licensed, you did something that, you know, spit on the sidewalk, something that is, you really shouldn't do, but it's not a detriment really to the community. It doesn't pose, pose a life safety issue, we just wanna correct that behavior. Secondly, there is an administrative citation. Um, those, and, and those lines typically fall into some of the parking things that are a little bit, and, and vehicle code things that are a little bit more than, um, what, what is, is a slap on the wrist, and then is a misdemeanor, and that's, you know, that's something bad. We don't want you to have a riot at the park. Um, we don't want you to do street takeovers. We don't want you to do, you know, le- leave your semi-truck parked on Canal Street for a week. So we want to have something that has some consequence with this. And then throughout the entire code, there were multiple items that were brought in that say this is an unlawful act, and we've defined all unlawful acts to be a misdemeanor. If not, Adrian would be reading for the next week, as we changed all these, and secondly, there seems to be a consistency that generally, the, the things that are defined as unlawful acts are ki- kind of bad things that we really do want to, to punish appropriately. So, um, there is an escalating, like I said, an escalating set of fines. So the first fine is, in, in some cases, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, and then becomes a misdemeanor on the fourth offense. So there is an escalation for doing it over and over. All of our fines, and this is one I, I learned in this process, there is a government code section that constrains how much we can, the cities can, uh, have as fines. We are referencing that, and we are consistent with the government code section on the infractions and administrative citations. We've taken a real good look at things that impact public safety, quality of life, um, property maintenance, commercial activities that shouldn't be going on, those things that, for, the, the things that Bobby pages me about, those are the things that, you know, really that impact the community as a whole, and we've, we've taken a priority on, on those things. And then finally, by putting all of these citation amounts in one place, it allows us to be adaptable, so that as, you know, ten years from now, we're still don't have the, you know, an outdated citation thing, or have to go back and find all of them and do this again, and then by doing this via resolution, allows the council to update these, these fines in a more timely manner, um, so that we are staying consistent. So with that, what is an infraction? And, and we'll have all the list of examples here in a little bit, but it's generally a fairly minor, you know, I said, not getting your dog licensed, spitting on the sidewalk, those, those type of things. Um, the first, the first violation is a hundred dollars, goes to two hundred dollars, and it goes to five hundred dollars, and then fourth and subsequent violations are considered a misdemeanor. All misdemeanors are a thousand-dollar fine, or six months in jail, or a combination thereof. Just as a heads up, we're probably not doing the six months in jail. Just as a heads up, we're probably not doing the six months in jail because we have to pay the county for housing that inmate. And I, I, you know, yeah, Christine's over here shaking, no. So, we're probably not going to put people in jail.
I got Paul at the federal prison, we can get it for you.
And then administrative citations, there really are the two, the two major categories. One set is for the, for vehicles. And we are capped by the state law on the citation. So, we skip the 100 for a parking in the red zone, parking on a sidewalk, those kind of things that are kind of, you know, things you really shouldn't do and, and it's not accidental, you really shouldn't do this. They start at 200 and then 500 and then become a misdemeanor for everything after. And then the things that are really bad, oh, that's a typo, I'm so sorry. The things that are really bad start at 500 and not 550. And then the second and subsequent become misdemeanors. Parking in a handicap zone, parking on a railroad track, those, those kind of things that, you know, really, really, really we shouldn't do. The other, the other big one that jumps out as far as administrative, since we talked about fireworks, dangerous fireworks and explosives have a higher cap and that's, the state law allows us to do this. And its classified dangerous is the, the non-safe and sane. So these things that we shouldn't be setting off. And there, there's a significant fine for doing that because that truly is a life safety issue. Then there's a couple of other really weird ones about hazardous, underground hazardous storage tanks like gas stations or whatever, but they kind of live in their own world and aren't really germane to what we're talking about. The other thing that we've done and, and we keep seeing this issue with citations is we'll write citation and then you don't pay it. So, what we're, what we're doing with this is, you have 30 days to pay your citation. If not, it doubles. If you haven't done it in 90 days, it triples. And then there is the ability for us then, if there is something related to your property, to lien your property for the citation amount. So there is some, some teeth in this. Some examples of what we have here as far as our, our current, this thing, where is it? That just doesn't reach, okay. So, our current citations, and, and I grabbed some that kind, we come across quite a bit. Parking in the red zone right now is $18.50. That would go to $100. Parking in a handicap zone is 255, that would go to 500. Parking next to a fire hydrant is $25. Parking a commercial vehicle in a residential zone, trucks parked on Canal Street, is currently a $25 citation. So, it's actually cheaper to park on our streets than to rent the parking space and just pay the ticket. I'm surprised you don't come in and like, say, I'm going to be here for a week, let me prepay my tickets. And then we'll, we'll go from there. So this actually puts some bite into some of these things. And then some of the, you know, the, the more serious, the more serious things, graffiti and soliciting without a permit and street takeovers. This is using the safe and sane fireworks outside the approved window. All of those are fairly serious things, they go up to the $1,000 cap. In your packet, you have the, the full ordinance with all, because there are dozens of changes. I grabbed a handful with all the changes. And then there's a table that kind of lays, lays out what, some others, some others of these examples. With that, we're open for questions and staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Conrad. The soliciting without a permit. So, a vacuum cleaner salesman comes to my door, knocks on the door, and first thing I ask him, do you got a peddler's license or permit? And they always say yes, and I tell them to show it to me. And they say their boss has it. So I could call code and say, hey, I got somebody over here soliciting without a permit and code can come by and give them a $1,500 ticket or whatever.
No, give them a $1,000 ticket.
$1,000 ticket?
Yes.
First offense?
First offense and every offense afterwards.
All right. So can code, does code drive around and see these people? I mean, because you could, you could spot them a mile away.
They're not, they're not necessarily driving around looking for them, but if we come across them, and we have come across them. And actually, I was driving around looking for one thing six months ago and found a, a whole crew of them in a van blanking a neighborhood. And we did, we did give them their $150, you know, and ran them, and ran them out of town. And of course, they swore that the city manager gave them their permit.
Yeah. I asked them what the city manager looks like, they never, you know, they're trying to describe me like Arnold Schwarzenegger, Clint, you're wrong.
So they seen him, perfect.
That's Loma Linda city manager. The fireworks, I know we're, we're going to ask questions on that, but you know, I had a, I read an article and they're talking about the fines on fireworks. And I, I know we did this with, you know, they took away the cameras for the, the traffic cameras and we were looking at cameras for the street sweepers, but they're using these drones and the cameras and they're going around and they're taking pictures of the homes and finding the address and they're giving that, they're mailing a citation to that resident, even though the resident didn't light it, they're doing this. I'll, I'll send you the article and I'll send it to you, LT. But so, and, and apparently it's working and they could actually find if they did it and they come back and they did it again, they could keep on adding these fines. One added all up to $100,000. So I don't know how this is going to work in the legal concept of California, but something to look into on that, well, the city attorney, if that's legal, so we could look in something like that, so it doesn't come back and bite us. So, and the main reason too, you know, of course, a little eight-year-old girl got struck and killed by a firework from illegal fireworks. But I'll send you the, the code on that. But I appreciate it, but yeah, I mean, that's the whole thing is, you know, and I get the same message from Bobby. And then, you know, when they're parking on the dirt, that semi is parking on the dirt, is that an extra fine? Because that's an environmentalist issue?
We don't typically do a, a second fine for parking, for parking on the dirt.
So you have a commercial truck parking on the dirt that could be leaking?
If it's, if it's on the dirt associated with the roadway, it's not. If it's on private property, you know, in your yard, then it is for parking on an unpaved surface. It's one of those.
Well, parking by his apartment in the Highlands?
If, if he's, if he's parked, for an, a perfect example, if he's parked on Canal Street, on the dirt, on the side of Canal Street, that's still technically the street. So we, we cannot cite him for parking on the, on the unimproved surface. But if he's parking on the dirt in his backyard, then yes.
Yeah, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, you know, parking, you know, because I know a lot of, especially Sam, you know, you'll get these truck parkings that they just, somebody buys a field and they flatten it out and the trucks are parking there and then, until they get fined or, you know, have to tow them, move, so. But I'm just, you know, that's kind of, the person to park on the dirt has to be jumping the curb over Canal Street now, unless we have a driveway there.
Well, then that would.
Because now he's ruining our curb.
Now you're getting into the code, the code enforcement specialty world for, to find that. I, I'm not qualified to go in the weeds on that one or the dirt.
Well, you're just going to have to set up a tent right there to make sure he doesn't park on that.
But this, you know, this, this does give us the opportunity to go from, you know, $25 to $200, $500, $1,000. So it actually is more expensive now to get the ticket than to.
When can towing be an option?
Actually, looking at this, and I'm going to have to work with the city attorney, I'm saying that towing can be an option much sooner. We don't have to give them the 72 hours. Because right, right now, we have to give them 72 hours. But we, we need to discuss and make sure that my, my lawyering agrees with his lawyering. And then it is very possible that if we are properly posted and if he's there and if I interpret this correctly, that we can tow right away. But there's three ifs in that can.
So, are we authorized to give tickets if they're parked in Walgreens parking lot staged over there behind?
If they are parked in a commercial parking lot in non-truck parking spaces, yes. If they're parked overnight and if they're unattended, yes.
Okay, council, have any questions? Jeff? Do we have public comment? I know we have Bobby Forbes.
Bobby Forbes. Thank you. So the guy that's parking in the dirt, that's the, when I called Riverside Hall and Water last week on him, they said that that was the Riverside Utilities Pipelines or Easement. So, I sold that house just down the street who has that bigery in front of it quite a few years ago. I told them when they bought it, they couldn't do anything with it except keep the weeds down. Well, they immediately filled it with trees and they were made to take them all out. So here's this big rig going across that easement. So I'm, I appreciate that you're handling it and making the changes. There are some big trucks in town that the neighbors won't complain to you because they don't want to bother their neighbor, they don't want to get in trouble. And so, experience is that if you do it anonymously, that the code enforcement officer will still tell that it was the neighbor next door that said something. So, they don't do it. But they're upset by these three or four trucks that I'm aware of, and I've not reported them to you. I've reported the ones that are on the city streets that are in neighborhoods of where they're, I know they're not supposed to be. Regarding the fireworks, somebody that lives by CVS came home Sunday morning and her dog was dead in the backyard because it died basically of a heart attack from the fireworks that happened Saturday night to Sunday. And I was going to mention that in public comment and forgot, but I appreciate that you're putting these fines in. I hope that it becomes easier for the deputies to get it. If we, the public, have it on video, can you, the deputies or the city, find the people or do you have to see it? You don't have enough people to see them, but is that the policy? Thank you.
All right, do you want to answer that?
I'm going to let the lieutenant answer that. But I, my, my gut feeling is, is that we need to see it or somebody needs to file a, sign a complaint as a citizen's arrest, however that works. But we, we have to, we have to see it, would be my call.
Video, I have, you know, two hours worth of video from the Saturday night ordeal and the deputies just couldn't locate the exact spot. They have a pretty good idea, but I think they have a lookout, you know? But does the video work?
You're on the spot.
I'm leaving it for law enforcement.
All right, so.
Sorry, man.
Yes and no. So the video's good, so we need to actually see the person doing it, right? So if we get video and it's like three houses over and we see the mortars going up and they're blowing up and it's like, it's this house right here, and then the deputies show up and you show a video and it's just the explosion in the sky and it's like, it's coming from this house and we go there and talk to everybody and they're like, well, we don't, we don't know what's going on, you know? So, I, I would say if you've got video that shows, because we have to shoot, we have to show proof beyond a reasonable doubt, right? So in order to convict this person. So if it's actually going to be, now, it's, there's two ways to look at this. You've got municipal codes, which we can cite on, but then you've also got neighbors who are like, we're done with this, we're, this neighbor does it all the time, we have video, here is this person, we could identify that this particular person is this person at this house, we can see them on video lighting off these illegal fireworks. I want to be a victim. You can then sign a citizen's arrest and we can cite them for disturbing the peace, we can cite them for possession of those fireworks and all of that. You just have to be willing as a victim to then go to court and testify on that behalf. It can't be just something like, I want them cited, but I don't want to do anything about it. Like if you want to be a victim and you want to, you know, have them, have them, you know, arrested for this disturbing the peace and, and for the, you know, I mean, we, we could still cite them for the possession of, if we catch them in possession of those, those illegal fireworks, we can, you know, cite them for that. But if you want to actually be a victim and, and have them issued a citation for a misdemeanor disturbing the peace, you'd have to be willing to sign a citizen's arrest at that time with a court date and then, and then go into court. So that, that's, that's one way to do it. But it does help, you know, to get, to get that footage and not just footage of, of the actual, you know, the show itself, but let's see these people. We've got, you know, video of them actually lighting these off, we could identify. That's why we get into kind of a tricky area and we could talk about it, if you want to talk about it at the end, but, you know, getting into houses and things like that because we need to have to be able to identify that person. If we're going to build a case on somebody and say, you did this, we need to be able to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that this person was doing something illegal to be able to hold them accountable for that, you know? It can't just be a residence. So that's, that's, that's one way to look at it. But, but, you know, by all means, we are open as law enforcement and the fire department, I'm sure, is certainly aware, you know, the same thing. We're, we're open to, you know, to ideas on how to combat this in the future for sure. Because it is, it's, it's not an issue just in Grand Terrace, it's, it's everywhere in the county. And it gets into kind of a weird area where, you know, safe and sane is legal, but you can't have the illegal ones. It needs, we almost need to kind of teeter on no fireworks at all. And that's a lot of the unincorporated areas of the county, no fireworks. If there's any fireworks and we, if we come on your street and there's evidence that you've been lighting off fireworks, that's a crime. You know, because with the dogs and it is, it's a tragedy. There are a lot of animals that are, that are suffering, but they could also suffer at the expense of safe and sane as well, you know, just because they don't fly up in the sky. They still make a loud noise and Grand Terrace encourages the sale of those in the city, you know? So it's like, where do you draw that line? Is it no tolerance, zero tolerance, or do we tolerate a little bit, but not the illegal ones? So we have to kind of get together and figure out a plan moving forward on where we're going to kind of lie with that enforcement with fire and law enforcement in the city. And that's, that's just kind of our standpoint right now, you know?
So, and I know we're kind of running down the fireworks and truck rabbit hole. This is a fairly comprehensive, very comprehensive update, not just for fireworks and semi trucks. This covers every one of our, our parking statutes, every one of our vehicle statutes, our RV storage statutes, street excavation, garage sales, I'm, I'm just picking some out of here, traffic signs, conduct on public property, loitering, roller, roller skating and skateboarding, storage of hazardous waste. It, it covers the entire spectrum of what we have that is our, our controlled activities in the city. While we are focusing on these, in this discussion.
Do we have drinking in public?
Yes. It's $1,000.
So we catch a Wallace House resident drinking in public, do you get a $1,000 ticket?
That is correct.
Okay. What about a homeless person?
Thousand, you, $1,000, doesn't matter who's the, on the receiving end.
I'm going to at least hide it. Okay. I just want to make sure because we do have those issues. We have the homeless drinking behind the liquor store, we have Wallace that goes and drinks behind the liquor store and, and, you know, probably public. I don't, you know, that one time I caught those three guys and I told them to dump their beer and they're from the Wallace House. Of course, those guys got evicted from the Wallace House. But yeah, so.
So it does, you know, it comes back to what the lieutenant said, though, is we, we have to see them, see the law enforcement, code enforcement has to see them do it, or somebody has to be able to swear out the complaint and go forward and stand in front of a judge.
Well, I have no problems doing that.
Ultimately, you know, for a $1,000 complaint, we're going to end up in front of a judge.
Okay. Anything else you want to add?
That, that is it, thank you.
Can we put a bounty on people, turn in people for illegal fireworks?
And, and so we have the distinction on fireworks. There are illegal fireworks and then there are using fireworks outside of the allowed frame. Illegal fireworks are the, basically anything that's aerial, that's launched, the commercial fireworks. Those, those are illegal and fall under that, you know, $2,500 first pass.
So if the safe and sane fireworks are lit in a, a non-firework zone, they get the same fine?
If safe and sane are lit in the non-firework zone or outside of, and I think that our time is, I don't remember exactly, but it's whatever, 5:00 until 9:00 or 10:00 on July 4th, you're allowed to light those. If you light them on July 5th, am I right on the time? It's pretty close. If you light them on July 5th or tonight, it is an illegal firework and you're at $1,000. If you light them on July 4th in that window, those are legal.
Okay. Except if it's right by the mountain in the, in the.
Unless you're in the non-firework zone. So there are, there are constraints on that, but I do want to make sure we're clear on that distinction, that there are illegal fireworks and then, and illegal use of legal fireworks. Probably the best way to put it.
All right. All right, well, thank you, Conrad. City attorney, you have anything to add before we, it says, let you read again.
You want a drink of water before you start?
I know, it's a lot. If we've closed a public hearing, I'm happy to read the title.
Close the public hearing.
All right. So if, so desired the title of the ordinance for introduction and first reading is as follows. is as follows. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, amending section 1.16.010, general penalties of Title I general provisions, section 2.44.020, violation penalty of Title II administration and personnel, section 3.08.150, violation penalty of Title III revenue and finance, sections 4.12.010, fees designated, 4.20.010, fees designated, fines designated, 4.32.010, generally, 4.36.010, fines designated, 4.40.010, penalties designated, fines designated, 4.48.040, violation of section 12.08.310, 4.60, conduct in public park, 4.64.010, violation penalty, 4.68.060, violation penalty, fines designated of Title IV comprehensive fee schedules, fines and taxes, sections 5.04.390, violation penalty, 5.42.190, removal of refuse of Title V business taxes, licenses and regulations, section 6.04.050, animal noise, 6.32.030, penalty provision of Title VI animals, sections 8.04.170, violations, 8.08.180, criminal penalties, 8.68.130, violation penalty, 8.104.080, same city buildings and facilities, 8.104.090, same city parks and other recreation areas, 8.104.100, smoking waste, 8.108.060, penalty for violation, 8.112.200, administrative fines and penalties of Title VIII health and safety, sections 9.05.030, violation penalty, 9.32.080, violations and penalties of Title IX public peace, morals and welfare, section 10.04.640, infraction fine of Title X vehicles and traffic, sections 12.08.440, fines for failure to obtain an encroachment permit, 12.24.060, insurance required, 12.32.020, unlawful acts, 12.32.140, park hours, 12.32.160, vehicles and parks, 12.32.170, assemblies, programs or festivals and parks, 12.32.180, smoking, 12.36.060, violations, 12.48.060, violation dash penalty, 12.52.020, general prohibition, 12.52.070, penalties of Title XII streets, sidewalks and public places, section 15.52.160, violation penalty of Title XV buildings and construction, sections 18.60.030, parking regulations and 18.91.050, declaration of public nuisance of Title XV zoning of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to streamline the imposition of penalties including infractions, misdemeanors and administrative citations for code violations and authorizing adoption of a schedule of fines by resolution. So that would be the...a very long motion to introduce the ordinance for first reading. And the motion should also include the adoption of the corresponding resolution, which establishes the schedule of fines, which is also included in the staff report.
Well, apparently you bored my wife. She left.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, the motion.
Second.
Second. Anything else?
No, I think I've said enough.
How much did that cost per line?
You could thank Conrad for coming up with that one.
I would have just said dito. All right. We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Conrad. Hopefully, these will start opening people's eyes and stop the same old routine over and over again and second thoughts about, you know, coming in and just doing what they want in our city. Future agenda items at this time, the city council may possess... They propose items to discuss anything in action for future duly agenda for the city council meetings. Consensus of the majority of the quorum is required to place the item on the future agenda. Do I have any future agendas? Councilor Allen?
So I'd like to have an agenda item and a discussion about forming a citizens committee to sort of shepherd the fundraising for the new library community center we want to build up here on the...on our property that was the Pettif family donated. So, yeah, it's years...I mean, I can imagine it'll take years for us to do it and I think the sooner we get a citizens committee going. But I know we need to have an agenda discussion on it first.
Okay. I'll second that. Anything else? So we have a motion for Councilor Allen's agenda request and a second, please vote.
Motion passes.
All right. Close that city communication.
Excuse me, Mayor? I'm so sorry. We do have Bobby Forbes who wanted to speak under future agenda items.
Isn't Bobby talked enough? How many times do you get to talk this thing?
There's no limit, right?
Okay. All right, Bobby.
Okay, I'll be quick. So I have asked multiple times, as have some others, regarding Patrick O'Brien's property where TSG was. Patrick is now in the neighborhood in the morning time. And so we'd like to know what future holds for that land down there. So he must be up here at City Hall or he wouldn't be down there again. So I would appreciate it if that could somehow get brought either to our neighborhood for a meeting or on the agenda for council. And then also, I've had people asking me what's happening with J.C. Wallace. That also has not been brought up anywhere since six months ago. And so in October, November, I asked city manager about Patrick O'Brien's thing and he said, "We were going to wait till the council was...the new council was up here." Well, it's been here for six months. So we'd like to know in our neighborhood what's happening with that property down the hill. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll let Conrad answer it during his communications. Or you want to answer it now?
Both of those are in process that are not ripe to bring before council. But both of those are in process and are not ripe to bring before council at this point. So when they are, there are things in the works. And as they get to that point, both of them are fairly complicated. And so there's work ongoing. And yes, we are meeting with parties on both sides, but there's nothing to bring forward substantial yet. And when there is, we will bring it forward. Because I'd like to close that as well.
Thank you. Jeff Allen? Communication, do you have anything?
Yeah. So we're done with the future agenda items? Okay. That's fine. Yeah, I...last Wednesday, I attended the... the San Antonio County Office of Homeland Services Regional Steering Committee meeting. And at that meeting, we received a provider update from the City of Redlands Office of Homeland Services. And we also received a report from the County Probation Department. And that's the only assigned meeting that I attended since our last meeting. And I just wanted to let you all know that I'm enjoying my refreshing cold water with my Frida Kahlo cup because Frida was born on July 6, 1907, two days ago. And she died on July 13, 1954, I think it was, or something like that. So here's to Frida and all her beautiful art.
Are you going to take a drink? Thank you, Councilor Allen. Is that all you have? Okay. Mayor Proten?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting for Tender Petal, who's provided the flowers for us here in chambers today. A beautiful and wonderful location. If no one...if you haven't been by there, please stop by. The owner, she's just amazing, family business. She even provided a beautiful arrangement across with a cascade of roses for a loved one who had recently passed for me. And so just very kind, beautiful business. If you haven't stopped by there, please do so. And Sunday, it was Sunday. We attended...the mayor and I attended the national championships at Cal Skate for their champion skate...their dress rehearsal. It was a showcase. And so they are headed to nationals. So please continue to keep them in your prayer. Such a talented group of young people, you know, right here in our own backyard. And if you haven't been to Cal Skate in a while, I haven't skated in a while. And I haven't taught my daughter to skate. My daughter goes to competition next week. So I was like, "Stay off the roller skates. You cannot break anything before you go to dance competition." But we'll be taking her there on Saturdays because they do offer free skating lessons. So that was what I've been up to lately.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. Yes, the florist is...it's a great business right there by Missoula's. They did also supply some flowers for...we had a memorial service for my best friend's sister. But, you know, wish their business all the luck. And then we did do a ribbon cutting for Baskin Robbins. That was a good success. I think it was a dollar thirty-one for a scoop of ice cream. But they have been open for a while. Of course, you don't want to do a grand opening for ice cream during December. So, but it's a family-owned business. The father bought it for his children to learn the business world. So if you get an opportunity, you know, please go there and get some ice cream and get some flowers and it's, you know, it supports our businesses. And on...yes, it was a great time at Cal Skate. I've been there in a while. Well, I've been there, but, you know, it's just...I'm not getting on roller skates, but those kids are very talented and even had a mom out there with her sons. But I'll tell you one thing. Eric, the assistant manager, knows how to barbecue. So they have a barbecue stand in there. And he had barbecue ribs with bacon bits on there. I mean, I died and went to heaven on that thing. So if you guys want some good barbecue...I don't know if you got to pay to go in there, but you could pay to have the kids skate and you could just go ahead and eat barbecue ribs that and the... And the wings were really good. And I was eating so much, I forgot I had to look at the kids. No, not really. But it was funny. I was watching the mayor, Proten, eat a rib and I was like, "You're doing it all wrong." She's all cutting it and stuff, like that Seinfeld episode where you cut your candy bar. So you have to eat it like this. And then you get the, you know, the barbecue sauce over your beard and you get to save it for later. So she finally started doing that, I think. Did you? No.
We were known as the table who finished a pizza tray full of ribs.
I only got one.
It was...
But no, it's a good barbecue. It's a good family event, too. And the place has been there forever and, you know, and it's just a great place for your kids. And those kids were really talented. And they're going to Reno. They leave Wednesday. The competition's on Friday. And they put a lot of hours in there, the parents doing stuff. And they're jumping with roller skates. And, you know, I don't know how they did that. But, you know, wish those kids all the best and their parents all the best. And, you know, we have a thank you card for even showing up there. And we were able to give them a grant, I think, last year to help, you know, with uniforms and stuff. So they're very appreciative of that grant. But, yeah, the fireworks. I'll let the lieutenant explain more. And I don't know what the fire department was doing during 4th of July. I don't know. You guys were probably cooking pancakes or something. What the fire marshal was doing, I have no idea. But it is. And, you know, people are saying that they don't want the Safe and Sane. And I know it's a fundraiser. My only suggestion to you, since it was voted in 14 years ago, that you guys go out and get a petition and put it back on the ballot if you want to get rid of the Safe and Sane. And then we figure out something for the youth because they strongly rely on that, those funds. So, yeah, and then it won't stop the illegal fireworks and might hinder a little bit. But pretty much it's just people not respecting other people and people having a good time, getting drunk, you know, unfortunately. And this ongoing thing at 10 o'clock at night, 3 o'clock in the morning, you know, those people are just...there's a certain definition on Wikipedia for it, but I can't say it. But, you know, so that's all I have. But, yeah, Baskin Robbins is great. The flower place is great. And go get, you know, have your kids go skating. They have...they also have skating lessons there for the kids. I know Saturday's free, but they do and they're really good. And they have a...for the kids that are learning how to skate, they have like little walkers. So I'm going to put wheels on my walkers and keep going, you know? But it was...but, yeah, the barbecue. That's the biggest platter of ribs I've ever seen, even though I only got one. So...city manager, your communication?
Yeah. First, we completed our gates at the city parks last week. So the parks will be opening and closing automatically. Please bear with us as we work out the kinks on that and make sure they open at the proper time, close at the proper time. If you are stuck in there, there's a loop. You can drive out. You just can't enter after hours. And then we have the same thing at the fitness park where the gate unlocks. It won't swing open, but it unlocks it in the morning and then it'll lock and close in the evening. So with that, we're trying to take some...we have great volunteers that are doing a lot of work and doing wonderful work with us. We're going to take some of the pressure off them. And then we're also doing is, when the volunteers can't do that, we're hitting that expense on overtime and having public works come lock up parks. So we're going to manage that expense. The other one is, is that we've completed the gate here at City Hall and moved our employee parking to the parking over here under the trees, which will free the parking where staff was parking for the sheriffs when they're ready to move in. In the meantime, we should have about 40 spots here at City Hall. We're still, once again, please give us a little chance. As we're working out the juggling of parking and times and if we need extra spaces or rooms and how we need to do that, there may be times when we open it afterwards.
We no longer have a quorum. Councilmember Allen is out of the room. So we have to take a break until he comes back.
All right. Well, I told him to take a drink out of his cup, so... Should we clap when he comes back in? Anybody got that Jeopardy theme song? AJ? Why are you so legal, AJ?
While we're waiting, I...what I failed to say was, I love that all of those pictures are now level.
I got our public works guy, Daniel, who is an incredibly hard worker and just really rushes and blows things out. We drove him nuts because it's like, "No, Daniel, go back and make it straight." And then go back and...it took him two or three tries, but he blew it out really fast. Then he got to go back and make it straight for half a day. But Daniel did a great job on that, so thank you.
I still think you should have our pictures up there with the eyes moving like on the haunted house. So when people walk in, we can see them. And I know you're putting pictures in City Hall, too, for...
We have our staff in the City Hall hallway. Actually, we've done a lot. We've got the artwork from the high school, from the art program up on this end of City Hall. On the other end, we have the staff pictures and the fire department pictures. Law enforcement's going through some shift changes.
We had no quorum.
All right. So anyway, law enforcement is going through some juggling of shifts. All right. So anyway, law enforcement is going through some juggling of shifts. And we'll get their pictures up. And then as you come in, you can see who the, who the cast of characters are out in City Hall. So, um, back to the, the gates. Please bear with us as we, we kind of work out the timing and the scheduling on the, the gates here at City Hall. But all city staff will be parked in there. And then that will free up the, the spaces here around here. And then for City Council, and I apologize, I didn't get this to you on the last week's update. The twen- the eighteenth is the employee appreciation luncheon. So, um, please, Wednesday, the eighteenth.
Can you order barbecue ribs from a skating place?
Uh, no, it's, Najwa is catering it, which, uh, who's a Grand Terrace resident and, um...
Conrad, it's actually the sixteenth.
Oh, sorry, sixteenth.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
He would've had leftovers on the eighteenth. Uh, but anyway, Naj- Najwa, who's a Grand Terrace resident...
He's in microwave in front of my office.
...is catering. And, um, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, to Chief Jaeger. No comments from you?
No, you know, we'll let the fire, because he probably doesn't have anything to say.
In between the pancakes. Um, so, you know, obviously fireworks are always a big topic of conversation. So I want to put a little bit of context to what we do for illegal fireworks of the county as a whole. So we do the interdiction at, um, the agricultural checkpoints on the fifteen freeway. Riverside does one similar on the ten freeway. And this year, we did a hundred and five sites and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-eight pounds. Um, during our patrols throughout the county as a whole, there was only ten citations and two hundred and thirty-seven pounds that we were able to confiscate. And when, when it comes to our partnership, obviously, on the night, um, for a period of time over the weekend of Fourth of July, we work together. We're in the same car. Our office of the fire marshal works with not only San Antonio Sheriff's Department, but also the local PDs. Um, and we do one of two things. We, we cite administratively where we can. And then obviously, if there's more of a citation, more than just a citation that is needed, obviously, the enforcement side does come from the sheriff's department. So we do work in hand in hand. Um, many people think that, that we are in the, the enforcer of fireworks, and that is not true. Um, we used to do and have our patrols, um, out there. But we realized we don't have any enforcement opportunities. We, we don't hold that authority. So for us, um, we work with our partnership with the sheriff's department. And obviously, as everyone knows, and I think that Lieutenant Frye said it best, is that, um, historically, in the state of California as a whole, fireworks have been a thing, safe and sane or illegal. And the enforcement is extremely, extremely difficult. So we do what, uh, what we can, um, to ensure that we collect the illegal fireworks. Um, for instance, if we come across a cul-de-sac and there's a bunch of remnants of fireworks and there's un, um, and there's fireworks that, that haven't, uh, been lit yet, we confiscate them. But when we come to ask whose they are, you can imagine what the answer is. So for us, it's very difficult, uh, for the enforcement side. And I'll let Lieutenant Frye talk about it from the sheriff's perspective. So, uh, we do work hand in hand. Um, and as, as everyone knows, uh, fireworks will go on through summertime into wintertime, and they are almost a year-round thing. So that's all I have, Conrad.
Chief, I, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
Um, besides fireworks, I go hiking a lot over here in the mountains. It's right attached to Blue Mountain. You know, it's in high growth. I find a lot of, uh, canisters for that, um, ice cream and whipped cream thing. And somebody dumped a big old box of them. Now, are they, are they hard to dispose? I mean, are those still flammable? I mean...
No, typically, they're not. They, they use them for the content of huffing. Um, so, but they are typically not, uh, once the canister, um, i- has no longer been in use and is no longer pressurized.
So they could, were, they could dump it in the regular trash?
Absolutely.
And why are they dumping it there?
Uh, I think they're dumping it because they're, they're using it as a substance, uh, illegal substance, um, to give themselves some type of high. And they just leave them there before they...
This is a lot of substance that they dump. I mean, this is a big old box of it, so.
It's a bit...
That was just my concern, 'cause I was getting ready to call Riverside, 'cause I didn't want something, you know, catch on fire or explode or something there.
Sure.
The nitrous oxide that they're, the laughing gas.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, LT, you're up.
What Gary said. Yeah, I was just gonna piggyback on some of his information. So, yeah, we, we had a couple deputies, uh, from Central Station that partnered up with fire marshals. And they went out and they did some proactive, uh, fire suppression, overtime and patrol. And it was all the county area. So it wasn't just the unincorporated areas of Central Station, but they also ventured into Loma Linda, Grand Terrace, uh, and up into the impact areas of San Manuel. And so with that, um, just to kind of give you an idea, um, although, well, let me, let me read this. So there was an email that came through from, uh, one of the assistant fire marshals. And just to kind of give you some statistics of what they, uh, what they kind of dealt with. So they, they worked, uh, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so the third, the fourth, and fifth, from seven P.M. to two A.M. And it says, "Just a recap from County Fire. Uh, over the three-night operation, County Fire used five hundred and six point seven five personnel hours, received six hundred and one complaints on our fire, fireworks reporter app, and issued thirteen citations and made countless field contacts with the public." Um, and then we've gotten some photos from our deputies that were working with fire marshal. And, I mean, just backseats, ba- back of the units were just filled with, uh, fireworks that they confiscated. So, you know, in, in these instances, just like Gary said, you know, you're going out there. We're educating people. Um, you know, we show up to a cul-de-sac. There's families out there. You know, whatever they have left over, we're confiscating them. We're educating them. So I think moving forward, kind of piggybacking on what I talked about earlier and segueing, is just maybe for next year, we can really have a, a, a plan to, to educate, you know, the public and, and get some, uh, some good social media, um, you know, campaigns, flyers, things like that. We can, we can put some electric billboards, you know, electronic billboards, maybe the thirty days leading up to it saying, "Hey, the fines, you know, if you're caught with illegal fireworks, twenty-five hundred dollars." Just, just drive that home to the community that, hey, if you're caught with these fireworks, it's zero tolerance. It's now twenty-five hundred dollars. You know, you have a banner across Bart, and whatever it is, just we have to start educating people that if we're gonna start enforcing and going out there, you know, and, and, you know, 'cause I've been on those calls, where you show up and you've got a whole family full of people. And, and I, and I appreciate what, what they mentioned earlier, um, during public comment about deputizing people. But you have to understand, if somebody's firing off fireworks at three A.M. and they're shooting mortars off, they're typically not in the right frame of mind. And we do not want members of the public, deputized or not, going over there to contact people. Um, because if you're gonna try to, uh, contact them in front of their families, um, you know, have words with them, try to confiscate that, and now give them a twenty-five hundred dollar fine on top of that, things get ugly really, really quick. So I think it's a good idea to educate the public and the, and the members of, of Grant, the community of Grand Terrace, you know, leading up to this, that this is what we expect from you as members of the community and City Council and the city. And if you don't abide by this, this is going to be the con- consequences. That way, when we come in and the fire department comes in and we take your fireworks and charge you twenty-five hundred dollars, it's not gonna come as a surprise, 'cause we've been telling you for thirty, sixty day, ninety days, whatever it is, leading up to Fourth of July, that you should not be doing this. And I'm a little bummed that I didn't get invited to the pancake party, but other than that, it's just, I, uh, maybe next year. That's all I have.
Thank you, LT. And, you know, what you said about education, 'cause one of the things I would like to see done, you know, for upcoming year is more, um, town hall meetings. So I'm thinking maybe if we have a town hall meeting in May and start, you know, with the sheriffs and we'll have the fire department make pancakes for us that day. But, you know, both of you guys, you know, start, you know, really, and that way the public can also see what we are limited with, too, as far as what we have to combat this and what avenues we can approach. And you're right about, you know, we can't go, you know, have death wish, too, you know, 'cause of fireworks, you know, with vigilantes. I don't know what you have as far as reserve sheriff's staff, you know, on that for doing so many hours they gotta do. But I would like to have that done, you know, we'll talk about it later. But make a schedule for you guys to start having more, um, you know, town halls. And, and really emphasize on May, that gives us two months to hit the ground and educate not only the residents, see, like I said, see what we have, but, you know, hopefully get the word out there. And I know once we get one or two, start getting citation examples out, hopefully. But unfortunately, you know, I, I know sometimes they light them in their backyard and they shoot them at a forty-five degree angle, so it's hard to pinpoint. Um, but yeah, education. And then I, I sent you the, the article, I'll send it to you, too, Gary, about the, the drone and stuff. And, and I sent it to you, Adrian. I don't know how legal that's gonna happen in this state by just taking a picture of the house that it came from and who's gonna be liable besides the property owner? I have no idea. Yeah, so that's, this is the big what-if. And I, I know they confiscate it a lot. You know, people think, well, the fireworks come from Mexico. And those come from state lines. Come from Nevada, you know, Arizona, all that. So, and yeah, when they're asking for fruit, well, then people are having fireworks, right? So, um, um, yeah, until you get those states and our state gets on with those states and move them back, they're not. They're making money off of this stuff. And it's unfortunate, but yeah, we, we put up with it. And like I said, if we do the, um, if you want to get rid of the safe and sane, is, you know, that's a voter initiative. My thought, and I don't know what the other council members, if the voters voted for it, the voters gotta take it away. But unfortunately, the fires that we had in our, the houses were from safe and sane. You know, then putting the fireworks inside the, the trash can, you know, cleaning up. But then the embers, you know, still burning and it's, the, you know, the house catches on fire. So, yeah, it's, and then as far as education, I mean, if, if they're not educated by now, bless their heart. You know, 'cause something's wrong with them. Something's wrong with them. But, but thank you, guys, for, you know, I know it's a, a never-ending battle that's always gonna be there. And it has gotten worse. And just like Robert said, I, we used to go to June Lake on Fourth of July. And I came back here, I go, "What am I, in Baghdad? What the heck's going on?" It was crazy. You know, it, it's just nuts. And Bobby said, "I remember walking on observation after Fourth of July, and there's bottle rockets, stuff everywhere." I got on my roof. There was all over my roof and everything. So, yeah, people just light them. And, and then, of course, we do hear the City of Riverside lighting their fireworks. And I think Colton does. There's like the day after or something. Yeah. So you're gonna hear it, but thank you, guys. Um, closed session, none. So we're gonna go and adjourn to the next, uh, regular city council meeting to be held July twenty-second at six P.M. And request to have items on a future agenda maybe in writing and submit to the clerk. And we, once again, we're gonna close in honor for the, the family victims in Texas and for the state of Texas. And pray for the first responders, um, what they're going through to help people. And pray, you know, just keep Texas in our prayers. So God bless and have a good night.